Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to be here representing at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. The mayor's going to be coming, joining us later. Roll call, Deb.
Councilmember Van Roodenberg. Deputy Mayor Canastino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent. Councilmember Pataglia.
Here.
And Mayor LaRosa is absent. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 edsec, notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in city.
Can we all stand for the flag, Slade?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the agenda? Mr. Harnberg?
Tonight for the Committee of the Whole Meeting for September 12th, 2017, first is a presentation of the FAA Update Flight Path by Deputy Mayor Kathy Canastino.
Okay, thanks. All right, first off, I'd like to start by thanking everyone who came and participated in the June meeting and has also been participating all along for the past number of years in trying to help us with the solution to the low-flying planes over our city, over our medical center, Prospect Avenue, Second Ward especially bears the brunt of it. Good news is that as a direct result of that June meeting, the FAA has definitely become much more engaged. And I was in a phone teleconference with them yesterday, and they actually said that my words to you should be that you folks were the initiators of this process. And this process has begun to find a new flight path to remedy the situation that we have here in the city. The FAA was very impressed by the folks that came out and the passion that we have in our city and how strongly we feel about it. And I think that we raised their awareness level of what we're really dealing with on a day-to-day basis. And the good news is that since that June meeting, and actually since the April meeting, where we were rather vocal, a number of folks attended, I've been invited to a series of meetings with the FAA and Teterboro Airport and the TANEC group. I've also been in constant, seems like constant, email or phone communication with them, going back and forth, keeping each other updated. They presented, they had two different presenters from the FAA at the last TANEC meeting. I have, and I'm going to go through with you tonight, the presentations that they made at that meeting. And they have given me the go-ahead to now post these on our website as well, so that you can look at them at your leisure. I waited because I wanted to talk through them with you first, so I think it would clear up probably the majority of the questions that you might have about that. If you haven't been to the website recently, if you go there now, on the homepage, there's a direct link that will take you to the FAA question page. And Albert has been great at keeping things up to date, and we will continue to notify folks and post information there on the website as appropriate when we have it. Okay. Albert's showing you. All right, so if we start, the first part of the presentation, or the first presenter in the presentation that they made was really going into detail about, many of you that were here are familiar with the word or the acronym ILS for Instrument Landing System. So the first presenter really was going through data on the ILS system, again, to try and assuage our fears, how and why they feel that this is still a very safe approach, and to try and, you know, help us understand why they feel that way. So if we take ourselves through this, you see here, they're talking about Teterboro's runway 19 and its instrument landing system history, right? And they're saying that that ILS has been installed there since 1999. And again, it's in total compliance with what they call TERPs, which is their standard for Terminal Instrument Procedures. And these are very rigorous procedures, flight paths, changes, et cetera, all must be in accordance with these procedures, again, to make sure that anything that is happening or any changes that are made are all being done, you know, with utmost safety. Right? Here, they're taking a look at what the view would be from the runway looking north. And the buildings that they surveyed, you see the circle there, they paid the most attention to the higher buildings on Prospect Avenue as well as the medical center, because the height of the medical center and the descent of, when they're making the approach, basically is the narrowest one in that flight path. Went the wrong way? Okay. And this actually is, if you take a look at this, you know, they're showing you Google Earth, if you look at all those blue lines, this is data being pulled, this is actual flight data, showing how, on approach, coming from the north, this is the way those flights make that turn in preparation for their initial descent into Teterboro. I'm going to skip this one, because you really can't read that slide. I'm going to go to this one, which is, Albert, is there any way to make this bigger? No.
I can zoom in.
Zoom in a little bit? Okay. What they did was, if you see, see the red bars at the bottom? Those are the building heights, that's the hospital grouping, and there are some of the condo and co-ops along Prospect. And again, this is all based on the distance from the airport. And I think if you continue to go over even further, you'll see more buildings that they plotted, okay? So they actually graphed, what they did is, in the month of April, they took 190 different landings, and they plotted the points of where the aircraft were at that point in time as they were making their approach into Teterboro while they were over these particular buildings. Okay, you see a couple of lines there. The red line in the middle, where most of them are congregated around, right, that is the path that the aircraft is supposed to follow most closely, to align itself with the runway and be at a very safe distance from any of what they call obstacles, what we call buildings, right? So you see them garnered around there, and they call that particular line, if I could see, I think they call it their glide slope path, right? The other thing they do, if you see, there's a line underneath it, the dotted line, that line is called the lower deviation limit. So when they're flying in ILS mode, the ILS will not let them encroach or go below that particular dotted line. And they're showing here that of these 190 flights, which were flights that they particularly looked at because it was in questionable weather, so visibility would be poor, yet they were still able to maintain the distance from the buildings and from this lower deviation limit. One of the questions that I had posed to them was, I know that there are many more than 190 flights in a month, and I would like to take a look at a full month's data, regardless of weather. And they have done that and provided it to me, which I will show you in a few minutes when we get through that presentation. Again, this is part of the ongoing relationship that we've developed, where we go back and forth as I come up with new issues that I see, they work on it, and they provide me with additional data. So then, if you look at that data a little bit closer here, you see those, see the numbers 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, all the way up through 13, right? That's where they've numbered, those red bars that you saw in the previous, so those are the buildings, including the medical center. And they're looking at it based on different criteria. First column there, you know, of course, first column is the number of the buildings, second one is the distance from where they're going to be landing. So they're starting with the one that's the furthest away and working towards the one that's the closest, which would be the hospital. Then they're putting in there the actual point, trying to read the word there, is it obstacle elevation? Yes, okay, thanks, Albert. So they're saying that if you measure the height of those, what they're calling obstacles, what we call buildings, that's the height of that particular building. Then they're showing, what is the glide slope elevation? So where are, where is the aircraft supposed to be in reference to that? And if you just scroll down there, you'll see the very closest number is the last one, which I believe is the hospital buildings, which still shows a clearance of 320 feet. My other question is to them, where are you comparing apples to apples, orange to orange? They said, yes, if you look at this, these are all compared in feet based on mean sea level. So they're all equitable comparisons. So that would take into consideration, you know, differences in the terrain, et cetera. So, let's go to the next one. All right, this is just another depiction where you're really seeing, not just a drawing, but you're seeing the actual map of where each and every one of these buildings actually are. But it's the same data, representing, again, what the distance is, where the beam is, and what the delta is when you look at those three. Okay, let's keep going. Again, they reinforce that instrument landing systems have been in use for commercial air operations since the 1940s. Currently, over 1,500 of them in the United States and its territories. And again, every ILS approach is developed in accordance with these strict rules and regulations. All right, in addition to the two lines, we've now added a third line. And that third line is called OCS, or Obstacle Clearance Surface. So they also track and program a level that is pretty much directly above where each and every one of these obstacles, buildings, would lie. And they're showing that the obstacle clearance level is also definitely separated from what the lower deviation limit is. In their opinion, it's well below. I question it. If you look, and it's hard to really see it here, Albert, because, I guess, because of the granularity, but I've, you know, looked at it, if you look at the very first one there, if you look at the chart and the numberings, truly between the lower deviation limit and the obstacle clearance, my estimation is it's only about 140 feet. And they pretty much agreed with me on the phone that it is about 140 feet. So what they are saying is that, in their opinion, based on their procedures, flying within 140 feet of a building is considered safe.
What is the minimum standard?
They will never give you a number for what the minimum standard is. I've asked that question many times. Their answer is, many factors come into the picture. There are many instances throughout the country where it's closer than 140 feet. I questioned this with them, and they still are convinced that this is safe. And again, this is, this is just showing where the three lines are in a larger scale. I'm going to hold questions till the end, if you don't mind, because I have a few other things. Albert, if you could switch to the newer data that they sent to me, which I think is in PowerPoint. Okay, so I said, at least give me the full month of April, not just 190 flights. And they said, okay, we'll try and do that. And they did, and we've been going over this stuff recently. This, again, is just a high-level view. Again, this is the way ILS works, you see these, you know, now there is almost 3,000, 2,961 discrete tracks. So they're saying, in the month of April, there was approximately 3,000 flights that flew this flight path approach into Teterboro, which, if you do your math, it's probably around 100 a day, right? If it was, all things were equal, although we know some days are busier than others. But again, this is true depiction of how this works, where you see it come into a narrow band as it approaches the airport. Here's the data now, and now here, if you could zero in a little bit, Albert, here's the 3,000 of them now. And if you look...
Not in PowerPoint.
Oh, you can't? Okay. I'm going to ask, I'm going to have you take my word for it. If you look, or try to see, there are now far more blue dots below the glide slope line than there were in the other picture that we looked at, but none of them do go below the lower deviation limit, although, as I pointed out to them, some of them pretty much sit right on it, which is saying that some of these are definitely at the 140-foot approximation to some of the buildings, especially to the medical center. You know, if it makes the folks on Prospect feel any better, you see the further away you are on Prospect, the higher the aircraft is from you. But as you get closer to the hospital, that those, those numbers and those points definitely come closer. So that was pretty much a lot of the sticking points with this discussion, is what does all of that data look like? I wanted to know specifically how many of those 3,000 flights used ILS versus didn't use ILS. They do not have that information. That's not something they track. But they were helpful and tried to accommodate, and we do appreciate that. Okay, we go to the next one? Is this the next slide? Okay, so that was his whole presentation, one gentleman who spoke specifically about ILS and ILS safety. Then another gentleman from the FAA came and said, now we're going to talk about what options we have, based on the preliminary flight test that we already did. Where do we go from here? We acknowledge that the city has issues, the residents have serious complaints, and let's look at what alternatives are out there for us. We know, we all discussed a bunch of things with them at the June meeting, and this is pretty much what, how the conversation followed. All right, first, they talked about some more definitions, you know, what's the difference between instrument flight rules, or what they call IFR, and visual flight rules? I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here. You know, basically, ILS is an example of an instrument flight rule, where you're flying with instrumentation. And visual is, you're basically, you know, see and avoid. See those words up there? I see it and I avoid it. And pretty much, the flight test that has already taken place was basically a VFR, or a see and avoid. So, you know, you were having pilots fly totally on visual only, fly to the Garden State Plaza, you see the overpass, fly there, you know, you were looking for visual landmarks, and that's how you were navigating. One of the things we talked about is, all right, we have the ILS on runway 19. Why not provide an ILS approach that follows the quiet visual of the alternate flight path that we discussed? Why not offset the approach so that we could have the ILS take us in on the new alternate flight path? Well, there's an ABC antenna, antenna, I think it may be talk radio, that is a 693-foot antenna. And even if you were capable of moving the ILS signal input to have or follow that approach, when you came approximately in the area of that antenna, it would interfere with the signal transmission, which would be a very dangerous thing. And basically, what it's saying there is, you have a loss of glide slope, so you would actually lose your signal on approach, which is not a good thing. So to be able to offset an ILS approach, to have the new alternate flight path use that, is not an option. I guess I've got to press harder. Okay, other option is, let's retest it. Let's take the exact thing that we did before, a visual, and redo it again, and see if we get better results. Well, what's that, what's that famous saying, you know, that if you do something repetitively without change?
Definition of insanity.
It's a definition of insanity, thank you, Albert, that you, and expect a different outcome. It's not going to happen. Couple of things here, environmental analysis is always required prior to retest, but greater operator commitment would be required. We know that that was the biggest failure in that flight test, is very few people used it. And the one thing that we continue to banter about back and forth in some of our conversations is that the FAA cannot require the pilot in command to fly this procedure. I wish they could. You know, I mean, that would solve a lot of our problems, if they could say, you must use this particular path. But apparently, that violates the rule. And the other is that flying visually is only available in daytime hours, daytime light, so you significantly lose in number of the flights. And again, they would require support of the TANEC group. So we kind of said, this doesn't make a lot of sense either. What else, what other bag of tricks do we have? So the two other options that are under consideration right now. And I'm going to skip to the second one first, the one that says RNAV GPS, Offset Runway 19. This is something that we ourselves have had prior discussion with, and those of you that were at the April meeting, I think you, you may or may not remember me bringing this up to them at that meeting about flying with GPS waypoints. All right, if it's feasible, there's something called RNAV with GPS, where you're using GPS waypoints to fly. You could definitely avoid overflying the hospital and many of your buildings as well. Waypoints would be coded. Current operators would be much more likely to use this than the visual approach. And it can be used for both VFR and IFR, so instrument landings and visual landings. So there's a lot of flexibility in this. All right, what does this mean? RNAV with GPS, basically, RNAV with GPS is still two-dimensional waypoints. And when you're flying a plane, you're in a three-dimensional plane. So there's two, basically three, but I'll talk about two. There's two ways of providing guidance to the aircraft. One is lateral, you're going left or right, which is RNAV with LNAV, lateral navigation. And another is RNAV with VNAV, vertical navigation, or another form of it is LVV. There's, there's two different forms, but let's stick with this concept for now. The requirements for both of those are different. Right now, the FAA is seriously in the middle of a study of feasibility for RNAV with GPS as an alternate to runway 19. They are going to present the findings of their feasibility study at the October TANEC meeting. It's towards the end of the month of October, I don't remember the exact date, but we will keep you informed, because it probably would be worthwhile for those of you that might like to attend. What it looks like right now, where we are right now in the study, is the rules for doing lateral navigation versus vertical navigation, it's more flexible, so the limitations are not as stringent for lateral versus vertical. So we feel somewhat confident that we'd be able to provide, at worst case, at least lateral navigation. Haven't totally ruled out vertical navigation, but vertical navigation requires plus or minus only three degrees off of the center line, and probably that would not remove us from the hospital and the building zones like we, like we would like to. We are, the lateral navigation gives us more freedom, gives us 15 degrees, and we feel pretty comfortable that they may be able to come up with a solution to that. Again, if we got RNAV with GPS, even with, even if we only had lateral navigation, now the pilot no longer has to worry about, where am I? Do I have to look for the Garden State Plaza? Doesn't have to worry about that. The only thing he would pretty much be doing would be descending on his own, but he would still be prescribed a vertical descent angle. So he would still have information that it would not be difficult for him, as a trained pilot, to manage that aircraft, much, much easier than doing just a visual representation. So, of course, we'd like both, but we have to look at what's realistic for the time being. So that's one of the options. The second option is RNAV, RNP. RNP means Required Navigation Performance. The main difference between RNP and GPS is that RNP is self-monitoring. So it knows at all points where it is, and it can alert the crap, the crew, et cetera. So it's a much more robust system. Additionally, in a nutshell, and there's other differences, but in a nutshell, it has three-dimensional waypoints, so you're probably, you're going to be much more assured of getting both lateral and vertical. And it also does not have to rely on straight-line paths. You can have curved paths, which means we could probably mimic the Route 17 path, more likely, if we had this capability. So what's the downside to RNP? It's newer. The aircraft has to have those equipment, that equipment within it to do this self-performance monitoring. And fewer pilots are qualified to fly on RNP because it's relatively new. This is a wave of the future. This is where the avionics industry is, is leading. So, in a nutshell, we're going to look, they're looking at both. And they're going to present to us in October, the feasibility of both. Now, I know at our June meeting and some of our other meetings, we talked about, hey, we have other runways there, why don't we just install ILS on another runway and use that? Well, do you see the advantages of what I just pointed out to you? Both of these instrument FMS systems and instrument landing guidance do not require any on-ground equipment, as ILS does, because this is the future. ILS was here long before satellite communication and GPS-driven satellite was available. Now that it is, this is the technology that takes better advantage of it. So the FAA, at this point, is not installing any additional ILS, not even, not just here, but anywhere, because they're moving to the future generation, the next generation, the current generation. Actually, Teterboro has a very small percentage, but they do have some flights right now that utilize RNAV with GPS coming into the aircraft. Of course, the good news is, no cost to Teterboro Airport, no on-ground equipment required. So once we can develop a feasible approach, the implementation of this sounds very realistic as a solution for us. I know I'm probably boring half of you to death, right? Too much information? Yes? It's not going down. You try it, Albert.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. All right, that's why it's not going, and that's it. So this was basically the gist of the last meeting and many of my follow-up conversations with both the FAA and Teterboro Airport. I think we should feel, first of all, very proud that we, as a community, have been able to come together and make this happen, because it didn't happen by one person or two people, it happened by a community coming together and a common cause, and that's what Hackensack is all about, and that's a wonderful thing. I'm greatly encouraged, as you should be, that they haven't dropped the ball, that they're seriously looking at alternatives, which makes sense to us. But the big question, which I asked them, how long? How long? Once you develop it's feasible, what are we looking at? And the number they banter around is anywhere up to 36 months. Okay. So what can we do now? I know I've spoken to you folks before, everyone out there in TV land or Internet land, about being aware and making calls, that's still very, very, very important. We can continue to raise their awareness, especially about noise. They do have noise studies, they are required to look at that. They told me, you must be doing something over there, of course, the number of calls we're getting from Hackensack has certainly increased. So I was kind of happy to hear that at the, at the last teleconference. I was hoping, because I saw some slides that they presented to me, that said that they actually suspended folks, et cetera, for having violations. But when I pressed that question, I was sorry to learn that they only are allowed to do this on takeoff, not on landings. And I guess it's very strict rules. So if you are taking off and the noise level during takeoff approaches something that is above the standard level, you get three strikes and you're out. In a two-year period, if you've had three instances, you are suspended from the airport forever. There's no recourse. And the reason for, if you think about it, during takeoff, when you're really accelerating the jet noise, the noise is far greater than it is during landing, and they are allowed, FAA governing bodies, et cetera, allow them to do this, and they do not allow them to do it on landing. But, they said, they are still encouraging everyone to make these reports, because it helps them make decisions. When we call and they realize, here's a problem, you know, they see it in a certain area repeatedly, or here's, you know, a particular aircraft, or a particular promoter of that aircraft that is... that is consistently running and causing noise issues within the city, then those are things that they also look into as far as remediating. So please, continue to make the calls. If you see an aircraft flying low, take a picture with your phone, you know, send it to them, and please send it to us, because we want to accumulate that information so going forward, we have more information. And I think I probably have hour, not bad for me. I hope I didn't put you all to sleep. Anyone who has questions after this, you know, at the end, I'll try and answer them. You can always contact me through email. I know some folks were talking about, should we have a committee forum? Should, you know, we want to be more involved. These are all things we can talk about, but I promise you that I will continue to keep you informed. As I learn things, I will definitely relay that information to you. I want you to walk away tonight feeling good about this, because I do. I think it is very encouraging news, and let's hope we have even better news at the October meeting. Okay, Ted, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you for that update. The next thing on the agenda is the tort claim form revision.
Thanks.
The City of Hackensack has had a form, the city attorney. Do we have an update or reform or process?
I mean, this is not anything that is obligated by law, but just as a matter of updating our practices, and I've spoken with Bergen Risk about this, the thought was to adopt an official tort claim notice form for the city, so that if someone did not send it in, the tort claim form would contain all of the information we want, as opposed to now where it may not contain everything, and we may need to go back to them and get the information. So just to have that official form in place, to require anyone filing a tort claim with the city to provide that form. Not all municipalities do it. It's not legally required, but, so we're looking to see what the best format of a form would be. And when we have made that determination, we would suggest putting an ordinance in to formally approve it, and then at that point, when tort claim notices were received, if they were not in the proper format, our city clerk would respond to them, send them a copy of the form, and say, this is the form you need to complete. So, pretty simple. Hopefully, next meeting, we'll have that sorted out, assuming the council has no concerns with that direction.
Are we looking at just taking the standard form, or do you think we need to? The one that we, we have one now.
We have one. We're taking a look at that to see if, you know, best practice is looking at some forms from around the state that municipalities have adopted to make sure it has everything that we need. So, it may be fine, but we may have a few changes we want to make, just to make sure that we get all the information that we would like to have in order to investigate tort claims.
Anybody else have a question?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Next, item three is the amendment to the resident parking sticker ordinance for the city. The city has residential parking stickers for residents, but we've come up with a unique challenge that I guess wasn't explored before, was that we have college students that are out of state that bring their car here. They become residents certainly during the college year, but if they park their car in the street and the sticker is from out of state, the police department normally would enforce that with a summons. So, the recommendation is to create a waiver for these students who are certainly paying the board, their college tuition to attend here. They have no other option to park, so it becomes a hardship for them. So we have three of them currently that are affected by this. So this information was sent to the police department that made a recommendation. I think it's going to be harder for the police department to candidly to enforce this, because communications is the key, and the minute they see these out-of-state plates, that's going to set an alert, but I'll work that out with the Captain Okolo. And our city attorney has done some work on this, and I think that unless there's questions that the mayor and council have, or Steve has something that...
Yeah. I mean, I would just point out, because the concern that I had in doing this is, of course, we have to keep on top of this, because obviously, people graduate, and they may decide to, you know, keep the lease. So, the way we have drafted it is that the permit expires 30 days after the student graduates or is no longer enrolled as an active student, unless they have become an actual bona fide resident of the city in a particular area where the parking program is in effect. As I understand it, there's a number of different areas with a number of different permits, so it's not like if you have a permit for, you know, in this particular case, you know, Marion Street, I believe it is. This is not Marion Street, it's...
It's Union.
Yeah, pardon? It's Union Street, right? That these particular applicants are applying for?
Yeah, that's Union Street.
That, you know, you're only allowed to park in that particular zone, you're not, because there's various zones with various requirements. The other thing I put in there that I think makes some sense is to insist upon the student's email address from that institution of higher learning, so that that's the way that you check, is if you, you know, we'll keep track of it through the police department, through the traffic division, and, you know, once a year, you send an email to them, and if they don't respond, then, or it gets bounced back, the address doesn't exist, then you can try and contact them and confirm whether or not they're still properly in possession of that sticker. So, you know, was trying to come up with a way that made sense, that doesn't allow for abuse as best we can. And, so, that's where we are.
Sounds, I mean, it sounds reasonable to me. Anybody else?
Talking about how many, how many students?
Three. I mean, this would be available to other students. I mean, you know, we do have a couple of institutions of higher learning, but the requirements are, you have to show us a lease that you're living in Hackensack as a tenant, so, you know, and you have to be residing in a zone that qualifies. Not every street in Hackensack is a permit parking zone. So, you know, if you're, I'm not sure about colleges here, if there's actually on-campus dorms or not for any of them, but if you're living on an on-campus dorm, you're not going to qualify for a permit here, because you're not going to be living on a street that has the permit program in effect.
And these folks are actually leasing an apartment right in Hackensack, right? Okay.
Yep. Before Jackie went on her leave, she's completely researched every piece of this, so I have it all in good authority, and she's worked all the particulars of this. Number four is a discussion item of the amendment to the street sweeping ordinance, to basically change the day of street sweeping on Cleveland Street from Tuesday to Thursday.
No, it's Friday, it's Friday to Thursday. That was a typo on Mr...
That's a correction ahead of me. So, we went from Friday street sweeping to Thursday street sweeping.
Is there a reason?
Basically, flow of, Joe Aglima is trying to make some altered changes to make this more effective, and we also had a request from a resident who also identified some conditions that happened on Friday would be more prudent to do it on Thursday. So. Number five is the discussion of reference of Marion Street residential parking only. If you remember, several months ago, there was a gentleman that came to the microphone that complained that the residents on Marion Street were basically blocked by the use of businesses who basically took up all the parking on the street. We sent that request and that issue to the Traffic Bureau of Hackensack Police Department. They did the research and the due diligence and found that there was some conditions that made us think that we kind of had overcrowding because of the businesses, and the residents who obviously live and pay taxes there got short-sighted. So, this Marion Street residential parking only allows for residential parking between the hours of, I believe it's seven and seven. One second, please. Yes. No vehicle does not properly display a valid resident-only parking sticker shall be permitted to park in excess of two hours between hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. So this will allow the residents to take advantage of their street and their resident parking versus someone else who's occupying a business who dumps these cars in there until they're either serviced or fixed or picked up by the customers. So, we make that recommendation. Number six is a commemorative street naming request for Sister Emily. I have a letter here from the pastor of the Holy Trinity Church requests the renaming of Maple Avenue in honor of Sister Emily Walsh. They propose that Maple Avenue from at least Main Street to Pangborn, Holy Trinity Church, is the only resident on that block. So, if not, the whole street could be renamed, and the two suggestions are Sister Emily Way or Sister Emily Walsh Avenue. I'll leave that up to your folks' wisdom if approved.
I mean, she was, you know, a valuable contributor to the city for many, many, many years. And, I mean, I think, you know, everyone knows, you know, the many wonderful...
Wait now, is she in 95 now?
...conditions that she's made.
94.
94.
Sister Emily retired, oh, strike that. Sister Emily retired at age 94 in 2015. She's added a few more...
Couple of years after.
...revolutions on the speedometer.
I mean, especially from Maine to Penguin, that's where the schools...
Yeah.
I wouldn't have any issue with that, would you?
No, me neither.
I think that that first suggestion you made sounds reasonable. Sister Emily Way?
Sister Emily Way?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. If the clerk could record that, we'll proceed when we get to that point. Thank you. Number seven is a discussion condemnation letter for 270 State Street. This is obviously part of the process for our redevelopment. I just wanted to make sure that the mayor and council were on board. You've been sent copies of the letter explaining the process for this. I guess this was also reviewed and proposed by Brian Nelson. I believe the city attorney has also seen this document.
This, I mean, this would be the first letter of such type that the city has become involved with. And I believe, you know, that, when that block was designated redevelopment area, it was redevelopment area with condemnation, so...
Right. So, as he specified, to keep track of this, there would be a certified mailing sent, and 10 days before, a visit of the appraiser before they showed up. There'd be an external appraisal of the property and its value, and once that fair market value was determined, the mayor and council and the property owner certainly would have a discussion and move forward, if approved.
Steve, have you had time to review?
Yeah, I will check with Brian Nelson tomorrow and just follow up that everything is in order, but it sounds like the proper process is being followed.
Right. And I don't believe, Albert, is this, is there an urgency for this to be approved tonight, or will it keep?
Not necessarily, but we should, we should keep it on the list.
If I had an approval by next council meeting, would that be enough, or are we stretching it?
I would defer to Brian Nelson on that, but my guess is probably okay.
Okay.
I think if we can agree, it would make sense, because we've been in negotiations with that property for a while now, so I think it would make sense if we could all agree to expedite it, but we can discuss it.
Okay. At the last council meeting, we had a woman come up in reference to Concealed Carrying Resolution. The resolution was against H.R. 38 for people carrying weapons that have a carrying permit from out of state. I sent that proposal to Hackensack Police Department, and the response came from the police department that H.R. 218 allows a qualified active or retired law enforcement officer who are carrying the proper identification, carrying a concealed firearm across state lines. The act was signed by the law of President George W. Bush in 2004. They go on to say that after almost 23 years of law enforcement service, Hackensack firearms investigation, the Hackensack should oppose the resolution concerning H.R. 38 Concealed Carrying Reciprocity Act of 2017.
I believe that's what the resident was asking us to do, correct?
Right. But as I explained, the more provisions you put in for people legally to carry these weapons, the people that don't follow the rules or do this illegally, they don't care anything. So, you know, we're almost penalizing people that hopefully are prudent and proper, and God forbid, especially in this crazy world we live in now, might be there to avert another disaster or a problem. So, I would oppose H.R. 38 and any resolution to do so. Number nine, public comment on time limits. I know that we had a council meeting last, we didn't have all the council members there.
We don't again today.
And we currently don't have all the council members at this one either. So, I guess we're going to stay, and I will add this again for the next Cal meeting, and that way, we'll have all five, I hope, that will be at the council meeting, and then all five can speak, and their either collective voices or their opposition could be completely explained, and we'll get this resolved.
I believe the issue is five minutes versus three minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
And whether we do it at the Cal or the regular meeting, where's...
Or both.
Or both.
Right, right, I understand.
And the ordinance is easy enough to draft, once there's directions, not, we just need to know where you want to go, if, anywhere.
The other issue that came up that was also a revisit, and I think we're going to pay another revisit, is the noise ordinance. There was some comment about following the state plan, and Mr. Kleiman weighed in on that and explained the process of it, and how, because it has approved and there's measurements in it, and the criteria is set with our current ordinance that it is not. The issue that I have, and I sat down with our health officer and also our constable, is that if we start to alter this ordinance, it's going to become more cumbersome, because now we've changed it again, and we're trying to find some enforceable in it, but make sure that the ordinance has some teeth so we can resolve these issues. So then, I remember clearly the mayor's comment that he wanted to make sure that if a resident on a Sunday wanted to go fix a few boards on his back porch, he could do so, because it doesn't involve a contractor. Now, the noise ordinance that we currently have specifies that you can't do, a commercial contractor can't do construction work on Sunday to start with. So, I think that the issue is, and I explained this to the constable and also the health officer, that I think the police department, our building department, our constable, these people have discretion. And they know when there's an issue and when there's not. The other problem is, is that this isn't going to be an issue unless somebody calls, reports it to the police department, reports it to the authorities, and makes a complaint about it anyway. Policemen obviously go to these calls with frequency virtually their whole career. They usually go to the homeowners of the people and say, listen, we have a complaint. We respectfully ask that you cease and desist. That usually takes care of it. Policeman gets back in the car, no autopsy, no foul, we're all good, have a nice day. By changing this ordinance, I think maybe Mr. Kleiman will concur, that we cannot write a clause in a statute for every little detail in this world. So, I would be, unless he has a different opinion, let's just stick to the state.
Yeah. I mean, well, that's, that's the issue, is the more we change from the state mandated ordinance, because they have drafted this model ordinance that they would like every municipality in the state to abide by. We can change this ordinance, but we can't weaken it, we can only strengthen it. So we can't say, you know, they've calculated appropriate decibel levels, for example, so we can't say, you know, you can blast a car stereo louder than what the, louder than what the state ordinance provides, but we could make it stricter. I think really, the major issue that remains unresolved is construction on Sundays. The ordinance that the state has provided allows it at some level. I mean, during the daytime hours, you can do that on the weekends. Our current ordinance says that there is no construction on Sundays, and I think the mayor's concern was, the term construction in the law is defined so broadly that it could encompass a homeowner who's just trying to do some repairs to his home, and even if it's... And even if it's not creating that much noise, because it's an absolute ban. And whether we should have some sort of carve out for residential renovations, you know, if the homeowner's doing the work himself, if it's not a commercial property. I mean, no one wants to see, you know, a giant redevelopment project, you know, running around on a Sunday like it's a regular workday. But with that one narrow issue, the mayor felt that we might want to consider that. So we need to have a resolution, whether to just stick with the state law, which is easy, I mean, we can just adopt it as is and then deal with, you know, construction issues as a nuisance if need be, if they become improper, or keep it as is, keep it as proposed and as exists in the current unenforceable ordinance, which says, you know, no construction at all on Sundays. So I mean, it's a policy decision. You know, we have the ordinance pretty much ready to go, except for this one paragraph that remains, I guess undecided by the council as to what they want to do with it.
Leo, what do you think?
Well, I think that it's okay for somebody to do something Sundays, but it's talking about a regular repair, putting a guard out, or maybe putting a piece of wood or whatever, because that's the only day that the people got the time to do something they don't have. You know? Now, you're talking about for instance, somebody using a chime hammer or something that really going to make any noise. Then it's up to the neighbors to call the police and complain about it. And if the police come to the person, it guaranteed that the person going to go and walk away from the project.
And the, look, the ordinance, and I think Ted made this point at the last meeting, the ordinance, as it currently exists and as the state model ordinance says, doesn't provide, you know, you can go run a lawnmower, you can go run a chainsaw if you gotta cut down a tree limb or a leaf blower, all of which might very well create more noise than, you know, a particular renovation project. It's kind of a case by case situation. So, you know, we can, we can do that carve out. If that's what the council wants to do, we just have to define it properly and narrowly so that it doesn't lead to any sort of major issues. With that deviation, we would send it to the state just to make sure they would have no objection to it. I don't think they would, because as I said, the state ordinance is even more generous in terms of what it allows during daytime hours, even on a weekend. At night, it restricts pretty severely any sort of construction noise. It doesn't ban it altogether, to be clear. It just says there's a decibel level, so you know, if you're above forty decibels. So it's, it's pretty low amount, but it doesn't, it's not a, an ordinance that really prohibits noise. It prohibits noise above a certain level.
There has to be some kind of common sense, like for instance, you got a Sunday, a holiday that that the resident won't stay in bed at least till nine o'clock sometime. So it's a neighbor going to start cutting the grass, seven forty-five, seven thirty. You know, and it's a Sunday.
What do you think, Steve?
I mean, I would rather have left it on Sunday than at night when most people are sleeping, but I think especially in Burton County, when all the stores are closed on Sunday. I know most people are running around Saturdays trying to do their shopping, or if they have, you know, children or grandchildren, sports, Sunday allows-
Yeah, well, on the, it says excluding emergency work power tools, home maintenance tools. They shall not be operated between the hours of eight P M. and eight A M. Unless they can meet the applicable limits, so that's the timeframe. And then, you know, landscaping is six P M. and eight A M. And six P M. and nine A M. on weekends and federal holidays. You know, construction and demolition activity excluding emergency work shall not be performed between the hours of six P M. and seven A M. on weekdays, or between six A P M. and nine A M. on Saturdays and federal holidays. Under one version, we were going to say, you know, no, none of that on Sunday. But the, the state model ordinance provides that it's between, you know, six P M. So six, starting six P M. on Friday, you couldn't engage in any construction or demolition activity until nine A M. the following morning. So both Saturday and Sunday. We have to decide whether to say, Sunday, none of it, Sunday, homeowners only. Yeah, that's really the distinction.
I think that that sounds reasonable, like a homeowners only. Except for an emergency situation.
Yes, and there's always, there's always exceptions for an emergency. I mean, if there's a, an issue to life and, and, and health, I mean, you can create as much noise as you need to to protect human life, so. Not an issue.
I agree.
So I'll, I'll come up with some language that covers it, I'll forward it to Ted and hopefully we'd be able to move forward with this next meeting. And then there's an ancillary ordinance that would then be prepared, dealing with the cafe and the speakers, I know that was sitting out there. We discussed that as well, and we said, let's settle on the, what we're going to do with this noise ordinance and whether the council wanted to address that particular provision of the ordinance as well.
Yes, I mean, I think we want to resolve it all together if we can.
I didn't know if the council had, you know, ultimately decided if they wanted to permit it or prohibit it, you know, there was some discussion back and forth about what made sense.
I think as long as it, it stayed in line with the noise ordinances that we currently have. In other words, so if you're, if you're going to be playing music outside, it has to conform to the hours that we have for residential communities and the sound level that we have. As long as you're in conformance with that, I don't know how we could prohibit it because we allow it elsewhere.
From the plane.
More noise, yeah, we can't prohibit the plane noise, we wish we could. I mean, that's, I mean, what about, what about, I mean, we're encouraging, you know, outdoor dining on Main Street. And, you know, with a lot of the activities that are happening, so I think we want to continue to do that.
I agree, we're seeing but in moderation.
That's what I'm saying. Conform to the, conform to the time, just like we do residentially. It has to end by a certain hour and it has to be within a certain decibel level. And it would have to be the same.
Yeah, and, and those levels, you know, would, would actually be covered within the noise ordinance itself, so, you know.
And back to the point of improvement, we also want to encourage property maintenance. So that day's the only day where people can actually, you know, work on their home or their, their yard. Want to be able to allow them to do that to a certain-
Yes. Next.
Okay, number eleven is the cold sterilization ordinance. There's been lots of discussion about this one. This ordinance is to amend chapter one seventy-five of the code of the city of Hackensack, zoning to prohibit all zones for treating and/or disposing of any hazardous medical waste using cold sterilization process. I'm just going to read two of the whereas's and that pretty much finishes this. Whereas the city council is aware that there's a method of treating and disposing hazardous medical waste using cold sterilization process in which is affluent, in other fluid used in disinfecting medical waste may be disposed in a sanitary sewer system. And city council has independently reviewed the matter and determined that the process is prohibited in the city of Hackensack as it represents a potential hazard to the residents in the city is likely to result in the degradation to the environment. So this ordinance, once approved by the council, would prohibit this exclusively in the city of Hackensack.
And we have been talking about this for a while, and I think, you know, we've agreed that this is not something that should be happening for residential community.
Yes, ma'am. Number twelve and the final for me, well, yes, for me, is the parking meter upgrade resolution and the parking consultant contract. Jim Magan and myself have sat down with Albert and gone through this whole process. We've switched parking consultants. We reviewed the contract and we've also reviewed the meter replacement and how that process is going to start by using this company called Desmond Design Management, who are parking consultants. I believe that this agreement is appropriate. I think the fee is fair. And I've had several occasions to meet with the gentleman who is going to be participating and supplying this information to the city. I think they'll do a good job, and I think the city needs to move forward in its efforts with parking and getting this in a, in a more formatted way that works for the residents and certainly for the city when it comes to cost of operation. So I would ask mayor and council to approve both of these agreements.
I've, I've reviewed the contract and I, and I see we've done some negotiation to get the hourly rates better, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Ted, for doing that. Anyone else? Leo?
I agree.
Steph, you okay with it?
Now you're allowed to play with a credit card by phone or anything.
I mean, you know, this is, we, we know we had to go forward with this. It sounds like you've made a great choice and negotiated a good contract, so thanks, Ted.
Okay. This would be the completion of my report.
All right, thank you very much. All right, can I have a motion to open to the public?
Open.
Call call. Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent. Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse is absent.
Okay, with that, anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, and you still have five minutes.
I very rarely need five minutes. Regina DePasco, Parker Avenue. Okay, I, I get it with budget, but why don't we take it from the P R. department for, for the paper? The, you know, it's, the residents have a, a right to see, to have it in front of them without having to go look in the book or print it out yourself at home. Take it from someplace else, because that, that's just not right, that we don't get the full thing when we're here. Okay, I get, I get budgets, but take it from the P R. Because what, what's he doing right now, I don't know. I have a problem with the P R. guys, both of them, acting as spokesperson. I didn't understand that that was in their job description. Public relations and spokesperson are not necessarily the same thing. And I have a real problem with the comments that both of them made in the paper regarding the Hackensack Police Department. They have knowledge of internal affairs investigations, because it sure seemed that way from what, from the comments made, okay? Especially by Bill Swabinski. And they were very biased comments. We're looking to sever without them having a hearing, without due process. I have a problem with a P R. person acting as a spokesperson and making those kind of comments about private personnel matters. Okay? That, if, if anybody else did it, that they would be sued. I, I think somebody should sue Swabinski, honestly. All right, the Cal agenda is now on the homepage. It wasn't, it was buried in, in with the meeting results. It wasn't on the homepage where the docket is. If I had known last time that Fran was going to do a presentation, I would have made an effort to be here on the M and M. Building. Had, there's been no meeting with the residents about it, that was it. And there wasn't even notice to the people that that was happening. But there was a comment made, okay, you know, the mayor asked, how much have we spent? Four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Peanuts compared to what it is going to do to that neighborhood to keep it down there. Whatever was spent is peanuts. It should be moved, it must be moved. It, it, I was only able to watch on, you know, the video on YouTube. I, I really wish there was another meeting, another presentation on that, that the residents will be notified of and can attend and ask questions. With the college students, if they have to park their cars at the dorms on, on the college property, they, it's incumbent upon them every year, we knew it. Why should we babysit them? Okay? The college, if you are parking a car, you have a dorm, you're parking a car on a college property, you have to get a new permit every year. Why make them do it? Why should we be emailing them, are you still there? You know, it just, it just doesn't make sense. It's not enforced anyway, so, you know, in my neighborhood, it's not enforced, so it, it, whatever. I will save the other for later, thank you.
Okay, just briefly, Regina, I think Debbie, you were going through three reams of paper for each meeting, so it's more than just a cost. It's, it's, we just can't seem to justify the amount of paper that we're going through. You know, from an environmental-
You can't justify it.
From an environmental standpoint, not just a budgetary issue. I think, you know, that it's there for folks to look at, it is online, and you do have the synopsis in, in front of you, you know, as far as the docket, without the details. But it's certainly here and it's available online for anyone that cares to look at it.
No transparency, zero.
Our, our P R. person works in conjunction with city and anything that, you know, is, is presented is definitely going through the city channels as well. As far as the M and M. Building goes, the Fran made a presentation at the Cal meeting. He also made a presentation to advise the planning board at the last planning board meeting. And the mayor and deputy mayor Sims held a meeting down in the M and M. Building itself for the residents to, to discuss such issues. And if a follow-up meeting is needed, I'm sure we would be happy to do so. Just let us know, folks.
May I make another point?
Sure.
Just to be clear, anytime an employee of the city of Hackensack is facing adverse personnel action, they are given due process. There was never any suggestion otherwise. And, and we would never do anything otherwise. All employees have the right to have appropriate hearings and the opportunity to defend themselves against any charges that we may file against them. Just want to keep that on the record.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Yes, yes, ready.
Murray Runan, two eighty Prospect Avenue. On behalf of myself and the Hackensack condo call board, I must commend our new city manager. And I still say no because he's getting his feet wet little by little. But he's the first city manager that doesn't leave anything dangling in the air. He, he, he takes the notes and eventually he gets the answers, go to bed. And I think he should be complimented on this. And also the way the city personnel seem to be working with him about getting things done promptly, it's, it's noticeable. And people have picked up on it. The other point is on this item eleven, the discussion of the cold sterilization ordinance. I spoke with Steve earlier today because you sent me a copy of what the ordinance was supposed to look like. I think you should hold off voting on this because there's a little more discussion that should be done on this, whether the ideas are right or wrong. But I think it should be a little more elaborate in what we've got there. It's too simple. So I think, I would love to see you postpone voting on it when you can meet with us to go over it. You have time tonight? We have a bunch of questions.
You know, a couple thoughts, I mean, with respect, you know, this is for first reading of the ordinance, there is no discussion. So if there are, you know, we, we wanted to move the ball forward along, you know, with this. I know this is something your organization has been pushing for a substantial period of time. We can do a couple of things. We can introduce it, and then if we feel changes are necessary, we can amend it at the next meeting. It will delay at a meeting for adoption. Or you can pull it off the agenda if you still believe there's further discussions to be had tonight and go forward. But tonight, there's going to be no formal discussion about it because it's just introduction. So, so whatever happens today is not, doesn't mean it can't be changed at a following meeting if we determine that makes sense to them.
You sent me the copy this afternoon, I looked at it this afternoon. And in discussing it with a few of our people, a few more ideas came up. I called you and asked if we can meet with you today before it was presented. And rather than the latest for weeks and months, because it's also years now that this has been dragging. So if you got ten minutes sometime tonight.
Yeah, sure.
We can go over it and make, keep it simple.
Well, I think, Murray, I think, if I may, I think what Steve is, is saying is, it's only the introduction tonight. So let's introduce it, not to hold it up. And then you have-
If I give them the questions today.
And then we need to amend it.
We can work on an amendment for the next meeting, so that would mean we can't, if we, if we-
Instead of waiting to the next meeting.
That's right, so let, let us introduce it, then look at, he'll work on your comments.
But we're saying that it's not a hundred percent correct.
What we can, I know what I'm saying is, is we, we have till the next meeting then to fix it, is my point. Then we would, if we would, if we need to amend, we can introduce an amended ordinance next meeting and we're good to go.
Steve, there's a problem of you getting together with us time-wise.
I'm here tonight, I mean, if you're, if you're willing to stay, I'm willing to stay.
I'm saying, ten minutes tonight will solve all the problems.
Sounds great, Murray, thank you very much. And thank you for recognizing Ted and the city employees, we feel the same way, Murray, we have a good team here.
Jerry Weber, two forty-five Prospect Avenue. Ms. Canestrino, a question.
Sure.
You, I think, I heard you correctly said that G P S. is under active consideration for T. to borrow. But it's, did I also hear you say that G P S. really wouldn't help us much?
No, no, it would help us tremendously. There's two components to G P S., the G P S. It, there's two components to GPS, the GPS navigation. There's, there's lateral navigation going from side to side and then there's vertical, okay? So there's two components and they're looking into both. Even if we could only get lateral navigation, it's far better than just what we had before, which was purely visual approach, which was limited only to daytime hours and also gave no lateral guidance at all. The, the pilot had to be aware and, and fly his aircraft visually by looking for visual landmarks. So lateral navigation is a tremendous, tremendous boost to the number of folks, we believe, that would use this flight path. If we could get both lateral and vertical navigation, basically that's the same thing as what they have now. It's not using an ILS for vertical, but it would provide everything that they have now, an existing flight path. So of course, that would be the, the optimum of what we would truly want. And I believe we can also get that with the RNP, um, option as well. Um, we may not be able to get the true vertical because of the, the limitations of the, of the offset degrees that are allowed to make it permissible. They're still investigating the feasibility of that. But even if, if we could start to not prolong it and, and have, uh, lateral navigation in the FMS, it would be a trem, I think you would see a tremendous, you know, a, a lot more than ever participated before. And not to just wait totally for the RNP as I suggested before because there may not be as many pilots qualified at this point. We want to get the most people using this as possible. So I think that what they've presented is a couple of things and hopefully eventually we get them all, right? But let's start with something to not hold things up, that, that's what I'm saying.
Did you mention a 5% window wouldn't really help us?
Um, no, what I said was the, um, to, uh, to define a flight path that uses vertical navigation, the rules only allow, um, an offset of three degrees. And if you stayed within that three degree, we believe, they're still studying this, but we believe, they believe at first look that that might not be feasible. But the lateral navigation is within 15 degrees. So they are currently looking at something within that window that would provide that and the feasibility of that. But even with that, remember, you're talking about experienced pilots, they would still be given an angle of descent, so they have something that they could follow and descend the aircraft. It, it would be a big boost over what they had before, which was only a visual guidance. So I think that if we could accomplish that, if they determine it's feasible and they could continue to work on it, that this is, this is exactly what we're, what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, good evening, Kathleen Salvo, 47 Lydell Street, Hackensack. Um, Mrs. Canestrino, you said something about their beating a meeting at the M and M building? Nobody was notified. They called Father Laughter the day of to tell them about the meeting, so our block watch was not. I mean, what kind of transparency, we couldn't find it on the website and we heard about it after the fact. So I don't know when it happened, but you don't call somebody the night of to tell them there's a meeting.
Oh, that's not true.
It is true, Father Laughter.
I called him personal at least five days before, five. And he was one of the person that made the suggestion to try to get the meeting in the M and M building.
Right, but he, he was busy with, with deaths and everything else and he couldn't get back to you, so you have to, if he.
No, no, he went back to me and he made the suggestion.
No, he's heard the night of and what, why wasn't it posted on the website?
That's not true.
All right, I wish you would spend half as much time with the M and M building and destroying this as you're doing with, with, with the, and I commend you for the aviation thing, because this is just as important as the airplanes, more so. Because this is affecting us directly and you could do something about it and you're not.
Kathy, I said it before, if, if you feel, if the community feels they want a follow-up meeting, I'm sure we could arrange it.
We want a meeting, a meeting, you didn't, you didn't put it on the website, you didn't notify anybody.
We had Fran make a presentation at the last committee of the whole.
Nobody knew about that.
Fran presented at the last planning board.
Nobody knew about it, Kathy, it's all, it's all quiet, it's all, there's no transparency in this government, no transparency. It's all secretive and it's all, it's all just ridiculous.
If it's required to have a follow-up meeting, I'm sure we can do so.
A follow-up meeting, no, a meeting where you notify people. It's not a follow-up meeting. No, no transparency, no transparency.
You can watch the presentation online as well.
As you do with the, with this, I think it's great what you're doing with the aviation, but this, this is important, while destroying a neighborhood and killing, and everybody wants to know why there. That is the most congested area in the whole city of Hackensack, you, you insist on dumping it there. Um, I want to tell you about item four, when you change the day. You change the day on the signs, you have to notify the people who live there. Because nobody is going to know that in the middle of the night you're changing the sign and then they're going to park there because they always park there, they don't look at that sign. They assume that it says what it said for the last five years. So they did that on our block and we all got confused because we didn't know they changed it. So maybe a little note or knock on somebody's door and tell them we're changing, we're changing the day so people know.
You're talking about the street sweeping?
The street sweeping, yeah, they did that to our street. We, we didn't know they went there out in the middle of the night and changed it and we all were confused. Naming streets, this is kind of tacky. I know we all, like Sister Emily and she did a lot, you start doing this. Everybody in every neighborhood is going to want to name a street after somebody that they admire. So I don't know about you, should set precedence.
Don't worry, your name comes.
Um, no, as I said, it's going to be my name on my street, so be careful. So I, I would think, I would think about doing this before you did it because like, we had soldiers that died years ago and they named bridges after them and then they come and they rescind it. Or all our, all our statues that they want to take away all over the place because everybody's going crazy with that.
We're going to name this street, Kathy's way?
I don't care, Kathy's numb, not your, my, your way. Anyway, um, I want, I would think about that. Um, as far as the noise ordinance goes, we have the nuisance adverses the noise, so that's good because the nuisance takes more teeth than the noise does. And I agree with that young lady that came before about the music. If you can end it at 8 o'clock, it's fine, but you've got to remember that noise does bounce around. Case in point, they build that wall for Route 80 and the people didn't get it right there. It bounced out and two streets back got the noise. So we have to be careful about the noise, where it goes and how it goes. Um, enforcement is everything. If you want to do the Marion Street, which is long in coming because two businesses decide to dump all their cars there all the time and it's a really a burden on the residents, we have to enforce it. If you enforce it, that would be, um, very good and everybody would be happy on Marion Street. Uh, decibels, and we've got to remember that there's no, there's never a person to read those decibels, especially on Saturday and Sunday, because you have to be qualified to do that. So that's another thing that doesn't happen. Uh, what else? Um, what's, what building is 270? Are we going into eminent domain now that we're commending, we're condemning buildings? What's 270 State Street, which one is that?
I, I don't, I personally don't know, um.
I don't know the exact building off the top of my head.
Why are we knocking so many buildings down? There's so many buildings that are so structurally sound that we could just fix. And it looks like a war zone, everything is knocked down in Hackensack. There's nothing coming up, everything is going down. We could help people and preserve some of these good buildings. Like that main Mercer there, that was the best building ever, we could have fixed that to make it nice. Um, so we don't know what building that 270 is because it's going to be condemned. Um, okay, and parking, as we all said, we don't want to pay for parking because we can go to the mall and not pay, but you guys are insisting on getting pennies. Um, I'm concerned about this two-way Main Street. It's not going to work and it's a lot, it's a lot, a lot of money. Uh, years ago, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, I don't know, you know, who's telling us to do it, but I have a study conducted by Eagleton, professional people from Rutgers College, Neve College. Never said anything about making it two ways. And if we have all these appointments, we don't, we can make a pedestrian, we don't even have to put cars at all. My five minutes are up, thank you.
Thank you Kathy.
Hey Randy Glover, Hackensack. I'm here actually for Triarc, uh, Community Development Corporation. Hello, Mr. Ehrenberg. I will echo the sentiments of the gentleman who said that you get things done. I think he's correct. And the whole city council, I'd like to thank you for, uh, helping us engage the whole city of Hackensack with the Main Street Live, um, concert series, as well as the different, uh, events we've been doing, the LGBT events, um, the, the movies that we were doing. Uh, all these things engage the city to a level that lets people know that the entire city council, that city government is engaged in reaching out to the whole community, not just one segment of the community, but the whole community. And you guys have been doing a good job supporting us and engaging with us to do that. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you Randy.
Debbie has all my information, she knows all this. Mr. Kleiman, I understand that you'll be meeting with us on the toxic waste for a few minutes after the meeting?
If you're available to do it, um, certainly, uh, I'm happy to, happy to, to, to spend whatever time you need or if you want to do it.
No, I'll just withhold my questions. I'll just withhold my questions until then, but I have a couple of other things to say. This toxic waste issue is one of the most important issues that has ever faced the condo co-op board and all of the people who live in the condo co-ops along the great Main Avenue. Uh, obviously it has health issues, but it also has tremendous real estate issues. This is not a trivial issue, we care about it deeply. And in view of that, I would like to thank the great city council who has always been, from the get-go, and this has been one fight, in great support of us in this project. This council has been terrific and I just want to make that, uh, statement. It could have been different, but it wasn't. They've always been most supportive in everything we've done. The companion issue to this, which really the, the backside of it was the LTAC. On both issues, the city council has been absolutely marvelous and I want to thank them very much. They deserve the highest praise and the highest thanks for that. And Mr. Ehrenberg, our new city manager, you're first rate, as others have said tonight. Right on the ball, you handle all the problems and it's terrific and you're to be congratulated for that. And thank you all very much.
Thank you Bob. We appreciate all your efforts too and, and, and the folks, the condo board and the other residents. I mean, everyone came out in support of, of coming against both the LTAC project and this cold sterilization issue. And I think we're close, as Steve has said before, to finally coming to an end enclosure, putting an end to that chapter in the life of Hackensack. But we appreciate all the support, thank you. And it's nice to hear something nice once in a while. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close to the public?
Offer. Say.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
With that, I mean, we only have about 10 minutes, do you want to still?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we should go into closed session, at least with respect to the one contract resolution that's up tonight, uh, for insurance. We should have that discussion, I think. Do we have our people here? I can't see, it looks like they're back there, right?
Can we get them in at the end?
So, so we get them in for, you know, whatever we can accomplish in the period of time we have. If we have to start a couple of minutes late, it's important enough.
And so folks, be patient with us, we may be a few minutes coming out late, but I think it was well worth it. I think we had a good committee of the whole meeting and thank everyone for participating. But with that, we need to.
We need a motion.
Motion to, to adjourn?
No, to go into executive.
Our motion to go into executive session.
Offer.
Say.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation or personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. Whereas the mayor and council wishes to discuss the following issues, personnel matters, ongoing litigations, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days or at such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality.
And, and just to know for the record for everyone, I mean, we, we probably will want to go back into an executive session for some litigation and some other things at the conclusion of the regular business meeting as well. This is just on the one contract issue that's up for a vote this evening.
Thank you Steve. Is that good enough Deb?
Yeah.
Okay. See you all in a bit.
And a motion to close the COW meeting. The executive session, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Hang on. Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.